Okay, this time I'll call this regularly scheduled meeting of the Harlingen City Commission, which has been duly posted to order, and call on Commissioner Tudor Yulhorn to lead us in an invocation.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you today to give you honor and praise. We recognize that you're the source of all that is good, and you are the source of all of our blessings. Thank you for all these gifts of this life that you have bestowed upon us. We thank you for the freedom and opportunity to gather this day. We ask for your blessing upon this meeting. We ask that you would guide and direct our meeting so that it is full of wisdom, productivity, and respect for one another. Thank you for helping to guide our work on behalf of our neighbors and our community. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome all of you to our meeting. We're glad to have you here tonight. We've got a couple of things we're gonna start off with. One is board recognition. And so we want to recognize some of our new incoming board members. This time I'm gonna call Carlos Nunez. Carlos is our newest member to the Harlingen Housing Authority Board. We want to congratulate Carlos in accepting that appointment, and we appreciate it. That's a really important work for our community. They do so much good work providing quality housing for those that need housing in our community. So thanks for taking that off, Carlos. Appreciate it. Congratulations. Thanks for coming. I guess you get this letter too. Okay, and then we have Elie Sanro Muñoz, which is from the Harlingen Housing Advisory Board. Elie Sanro here. This is again one of our really flagship boards for our community that does so much for people. Beautiful and beautified, and we really thank you for agreeing to serve on that board. Richard Newton for the Veterans Advisory Board. It's Richard here, yes. I want to thank you. And Jackie Norton. Both of you could come up, and Martin Borjas. Martín. Martín Borjas.
Yes.
Yes, please. Come over here, because Melissa wants to take your picture.
Oh, I guess.
You'd probably rather take your picture with Melissa than me, but. Martín, thank you. So Newton, I want to thank you for agreeing to serve on the Veterans Advisory Board. Martin, and Martin Borjas, thank all of you so much for agreeing to serve. You've already served us. We thank you for that service. And now we ask, we thank you for continuing to serve us.
Thank you.
One, two. Thank you.
And so item two on the agenda is reading of proclamation of National Library Week. So we've got some representatives from the library board, and the library would like you to come up. Judy, come on up here. I missed this one.
That's easy to do.
And it's Chris Castillo here. Chris Castillo, as of now. We want to thank Judy for agreeing to serve our animal shelter advisory. So thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
All right. Well, now my privilege to present proclamation to you all. Whereas libraries are not just about what we have, more people than what we do for and with people. Whereas libraries and law services, trusted treasure of institutions, and library workers and librarians fuel efforts to better their communities. And whereas libraries are evolving in order to serve their communities and to continue to fulfill their role in leveling the learning field for all to seek information and access technology. Whereas libraries and librarians open up world possibilities through innovative programming, job-seeking resources, and the power of reading. Whereas libraries and librarians are looking beyond their traditional roles to provide more opportunities for greater engagement and deliver new services to connect closely with patrons' needs. Whereas libraries support democracy and effective social change through their commitment to provide equitable access to information for all library users, regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status. Whereas libraries, librarians, library workers, volunteers, and supporters across America are celebrating National Library Week. Now therefore, I, Chris Boswell, resolve that proclaiming April 10 through the 16th, 2016, is National Library Week, and encourage all residents to visit the Harlingen Public Library and take advantage of the wonderful resources at your library. So I want to present that to you. And you know, some of y'all are just treasures to our community, and you have been such supporters of our library for, I won't say how long. Some of you have been great supporters for our library for a time. Some of you died as long, but it's been the strongest support ever left, and we just thank you from the bottom of our hearts for what you do for our library. It's such a great institution we work in. You don't want to say anything? All right. All right, well, thank you. Thank you. Next, we want to go to item three, which is a presentation by my good friend Veronica Whitaker, a member of the McAllen City Commission, District Six, regarding the Run, Ride, Share Awareness Program to Raise Safety Awareness Among Drivers, Runners, Pedestrians, and Cyclists to Decrease the Risk Involved with Outdoor Activities. Commissioner, thank you so much for coming and sharing this with us. Welcome.
I appreciate that, and thank you all for having me here this evening and to allowing me to speak on behalf of the Run, Ride, and Share Program. The Run, Ride, and Share Program happened in April, started in April of 2014, to help reduce the amount of fatalities and casualties while either running, cycling, or just basically walking with your family on the road. Not only do I want to ask for respect for our runners, our riders, and our cyclists, but we also have to respect as we are driving on our road. We have to respect each other and learn that the road is not just ours, it belongs to everyone within our community. In the year of 2014, we had three tragedies during that one year alone, and so it was time that we brought up a program or started a program to help reduce or to bring awareness and to educate the community. So our group began in April of 2014, and as we began and started to grow, which we had about 60 members at the beginning, and they've continued to follow us to this day. So what we're doing is we started, we have inside your packets, of course, you'll see that we have our mats that we give out at all the different activities that we have during the year, which during the year we hold bike rodeos, we're at health fairs, we are at different activities that are taking place during what our city is offering, Viva McAllen, Keep McAllen Beautiful, anything that the police department is hosting, we usually are there. At Car Fest shows, we're usually there, passing out brochures, which are just to educate, to try to help to understand that we need to share the road. Our bike rodeos, we are also partnered with the school districts. We've done a bike rodeo in McAllen School District, Mission School District, and La Jolla School District. And what we do is that we are there for the entire day, and we are teaching the children from first through fifth grade during their PE classes. We are totally amazed about how many of the children are not able to ride a bike, even in the eighth grade, which are 10 and 11-year-old children. Most children, because of the safety of our streets again, are not allowed to go out and ride their bikes as we did as children, because we have so many different precautions that we have to take place during our lifestyle today. It's not as when we grew up, maybe maybe young, but when I grew up, I used to be able to ride the bike all over the city of McAllen, and we were safe. Today, we do not have the same opportunity. So we are again, are trying to educate the children on how to be safe on the road, how to wear a helmet, how to make sure that you've got the right lighting on at night while you're out riding or running, and even the cyclists, our professional cyclists. We have, I know that Harlingen has a large cycling community, and I know that they have had two tragedies within the city of Harlingen the last couple of years. And we can avoid that if we all group together, become a regional organization, and all of us share the road, respect the road, and learn how to educate each other. So what I am asking is to join our group to be able, and through sponsorship. And what you'll do, if you'll become, you'll have bike lanes within your city, you'll also put signage, which is this sign right here, which McAllen has, Edinburgh has, Mission, Weslaco, and Eutikal, are all part of our organization. On April 29th, I will have the privilege to talk to the top five people in the tech stock in Austin, which I'm very, very excited about, because at that point, I can then say McAllen, Mission, Weslaco, Edinburgh, FAR, Harlingen, and Brownsville are part of our program and want to see the Rio Grande Valley on the map as the first ones to help educate and have bike rodeos, have signage, have our mats, have everything what it takes to move forward in order for us to reduce the amount of casualties and fatalities while on the road. Cycling, walking with your family, riding a bike, running, whatever it is, but we are all on the road, and we all need to share it, and we all need to respect. So at this time, I did leave each and every one of you a packet. You have a brochure, which we do hand out consistently at every activity that we're able to do. Our mats are consistently handed out. On May 18th, or the third Wednesday of the month, it is the Ride of Silence, where we honor everyone in the, worldwide, everyone rides their bike at 7:00 PM. And so our arm bands, we give out more than 400 at the Ride of Silence, just in McAllen alone. So if you all join us, we will help you to get the ball rolling here in Harlingen, Austin. So thank you very much. I appreciate that you all gave me this time and an opportunity to come before you.
All right, Commissioner. Thank you so much. Does anybody have any questions for Commissioner? We appreciate you coming in and presenting this program.
If you do want to sponsor our program, then you can give me a call, and then we can move forward.
Okay.
All righty?
All right.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you. Item four is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of August 3, 2016. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
I approve.
Motion is second. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Did you get the second?
Second.
It was Ms. Mar, he breathed loud, and I thought it was the second. All right. Minutes approved. Consent Agenda 5A through F, sorry, motion adopted consent agenda.
I make my motion we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item six, consider take action to approve a resolution adopting the new City of Harlingen Conference of Plan, One Vision, One Harlingen. Gave, it's all.
Mayor, members of the commission, on March 20th, 2013, we signed a contract with Half Associates to actually begin the conference of plan. We've had a series of four workshops to get public input regarding the plan. We've had a few public hearings, and on March 21st, the Planning Zoning Commission approved the conference of plan by a majority vote. I will tell you that all the information that Half gathered, all the data that he compiled in the plan has not changed. The only thing that changed from the initial report that he submitted was the content and the, rather, the chapters. We restructured the chapters that weren't in the original format that we presented. We made a lot of grammatical errors. We changed almost all of the photographs, and we enlarged the maps. The maps that were submitted were originally on eight and a half by 11. We made them almost by 11 by 17 to make them more legible. We have had a series of planning meetings within staff, with the city manager, to go over this final product. We gave him a copy of it, and he's reviewed it along with the mayor. Before the planning zoning, he actually had a chance to look at it. They did approve it, and so we're presenting a resolution, if you'd not, for your consideration to actually adopt the plan. If you have any questions about the content of the plan, Odigo from Planning Zoning is here to address any issues or questions you may have.
Well, I want to congratulate Gabe and Odigo and his staff for working so hard and putting this together and revising the document where it's very easy to use, easy to follow. Great job. I just want to thank Jesse Rovas, the chairman of the committee, that was spearheaded to put this document together, did a fantastic job. It is a good document, it's a great document that's gonna help us build on our strengths and keep the city moving forward. So, great job, guys.
Anybody have any questions?
No questions. It just agrees very well.
All right. Is there a motion to approve a resolution adopting One Vision, One Harlingen?
So moved. Second.
All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign, motion carries. Well, I want to echo what the city manager said and thank everybody who was involved in putting this together, and I mean, it was everybody. Everybody was involved in putting this thing together. The commission was involved, all of you were attended the workshops and the planning Every department was involved in putting this thing together. Great leadership from, as the city manager said, from Jesse Rovas and the steering committee who worked so hard to get this thing together. It is a great plan for our community. It's a great plan for the long term of our community. It addresses so many of our future needs and concerns on a multi-layered basis. Don't you get a fine for that?
That's a dog right there.
Anyway. But really, even though it's taken, it's taken a lot of work to get this document put together, the work's just beginning, because now the work is, now we have to do, now we have to look at these things, look at these objectives, and see how we can accomplish them, and plan those things out. So I'd like to hope that soon, the next month, or within the next 60 days, let's say, the city commission should be, have a workshop, and really identify some of the things that ought to be the priority objectives, and start to really work on achieving some of the goals and objectives that have been laid out, because there are in here some very specific goals and objectives that we can accomplish. And so, thanks again to everyone, and we look forward to working the plan. All right. Then we'll go to item seven, consider take action to allow the Texas Commission on Environmental TCEQ to access the city parking lot located at the corner of Harrison and First Street and install an additional monitoring well.
Good evening. TCEQ is requesting access to the city property located next to the wreath on Harrison and First Street to install a monitoring well for, I guess, to assess the groundwater contaminant and the location. TCEQ would like access agreement between the city and the state to allow the consultant perform following proposed activities, installation and monitoring of well, which is located about 50 feet away from an existing well. There's a map in your packet, staff recommends allowing TCEQ access to the property to install the and repair the monitoring wells located on the property.
I mean, the map shows the property as it was before, not as it is now. Are we gonna lose any parking places or anything like that?
Actually, no, it'll be flush with the asphalt surface. We're not losing a space or anything.
Is there an existing well there now?
There's one along Harrison Drive, almost in the sidewalk area, but this one will be about 50, 60 feet.
Just one?
Just one.
Just one, okay, because I see three of, three dots here.
Those are existing. We just want to install one more. Yeah.
And is there particular reason why all of a sudden they want to add one, or is this just a random event?
No, they want, I guess they want to monitor, because if you look at your packet, on August 2015, they pulled out about .92 feet of pollutant from the existing one. So they want to see, okay, well, what's going on inside the property or underneath.
They want to determine it was migrating further out. So that's the purpose of the additional well.
Then we have a motion to allow TCEQ access.
So moved. Second.
All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item A, consider take action to accept or reject bids and awarded contract with 2015, 16 Gerald Fund Street Improvement Project under bid 2016-06.
This project will include work on various streets throughout the city of Harlingen, as shown in your map. It will consist of rehab and overlay of existing roadways. On Tuesday, March 29, 2016, staff received and opened a total of eight bids for the proposed projects. All the bids received met the bits and mill requirements. The lowest bid for the project was submitted by Chlore Construction in the amount of $1,265,240.30. Staff recommends that we accept the lowest bids submitted by Chlore Construction in the amount of $1,265,240.30. Mr. Francisco Chavez is here with Chlore, if you all have any questions for him.
This is under budget, right?
Ah, yes, it's under budget.
Does anybody have any questions? And is there a motion to accept the bid and award the contract per the staff's recommendation?
So moved. Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We look forward to getting the start of all these projects.
So do we.
Thanks. Item A, consider take action to accept or reject bids and awarded contract, I'm sorry, deny, consider take action to adopt an ordinance to designate a no parking zone along the north and south side of Kimball Avenue.
This request was presented to staff due to concerns with parking along Kimball Avenue. Basically, it's from Bonito Road to the west to the end of the street. Staff verified the concern with a non-site inspection and determined the need to place a no parking zone on both the north and south side of Kimball Avenue. The distance is about 185 linear feet in length from Bonito Road to the end of Kimball Avenue. Staff recommends approval of the no parking zone.
What was the cause of the?
There's a business on the south side, and there's a couple of businesses, and they park their cars along Kimball. It doesn't really leave, that road is not very wide to begin with, and it doesn't leave very much room to go by there.
All right. Can we have the city attorney read the word for the caption?
An ordinance to establish no parking zone on the north side and the south side of Kimball Avenue, beginning at its intersection with Bonito Road, extending west for a distance of approximately 185 linear feet in length, authorizing the towing of vehicles to park, park, and set no parking zone, establishing a penalty now to exceed $200 for violation of the provisions that exist of this ordinance, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to folklore.
Commissioner, did you have a question?
Yeah, I was gonna ask, will the businesses have places to park?
They can park in the front, they can park in the front along the loop. They face the loop.
They were not thrown in somewhere else, so.
Right.
Is there a motion about the ordinance on first reading?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign, the motion carries. Item 10, consider take action to approve an overdue fine amnesty at the library in honor of National Library Week, April 11 through 17.
Mayor, commissioners, in honor of National Library Week, the library would like to offer an amnesty from April 11th until April 17th. Patrons will be able to bring in their long overdue items in good condition. Then library staff will check in the item and waive any fines that are due on those items. Only items that are due during that week will be waived, will be eligible for the fines being waived. The library offered this program last year, and we recovered 89 items that were long overdue and waived $216 in fines in just one day. Staff recommends approval of this program.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the overdue fine amnesty?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign, this is not as controversial as some other. Thank you. Item 11, consider take action to approve a contract between the city of Harlingen and RGV Robotics Inc. to operate the summer LEGO Robotics Camp for the enjoyment of the youth from Harlingen and surrounding areas, and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement.
Good evening, mayor, commissioners. We brought this before you. Last year, we had the same program, the LEGO Robotics Camp. Last year, we only had it for a week. It was half-days. This year, what we're planning, proposing is to have for two weeks, almost all day, from May 30 to 2:30. And it's gonna be held at Gutierrez Elementary again. The difference between last year's contract and this one is that we're, we're gonna have, we're proposing an 80/20 split with the contractor, like similar to what we do with the other contractors. But the Park Advisory Board met on March 15th, and they recommended approval, and so did staff.
So was last year successful?
Yes, sir. We had 63 participants that participated in last year's.
And so there, you believe there's greater demand for this year?
Yes, sir.
Great.
Okay. Sounds like a neat program. Is there a motion?
I had a question regarding the contracts, just real quick. I don't want to complicate things, but we've got, there's sort of three parties to this thing, since we're using Gutierrez Middle School, and we have the principal of Gutierrez Middle School authorizing the use of the school. Is that standard?
No.
Well, we did that last year too, and the reason we did it is because we want to make sure, I particularly wanted to be sure that the person in charge of the school was aware of the fact, so there couldn't be any issue for us later that the school wasn't aware. So we asked, I think we simply are asking them to sign off on it, and that's the reason.
Can we change that to Dr. Valak Kossis? The superintendent?
We can, yeah, we can if you want.
If it just seemed like that, if we're having a contract, I really.
I think he should sign it.
Okay. Okay, with that recommended change, then is there a motion to approve the contract with RGV Robotics?
So moved. Second.
Motion is second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign, the motion carries. Item 12, consider take action to approve the Conservation Adjustment Clause tariff for the energy efficiency program for Texas Gas Service.
Mayor, members of the commission, the Texas Gas Service is proposing to implement a Conservation Adjustment Clause tariff for its clients that use natural gas. The increase will be 28 cents for residential customer and 72 cents for commercial customers. A couple of things you should probably be aware of. This takes effect on April 27, 2016, but the council doesn't necessarily have to approve this. We put this on the agenda because there is a tariff that's gonna be implemented to the residents of Harlingen, and we felt that you should know about that. This really is a take no action, so if you take no action, it passes automatically. If you want to deny the tariff, then you'd have to adopt an ordinance, actually denying that through an ordinance. There are some people here from Texas Gas Service, Nomi, Tom, and Jennifer, I believe. If you have any questions for the gas company. The tariff will be used primarily for rebates for energy efficient gas ranges, water heaters, dryers, and other natural gas equipment. So the funds they collect from the region will be pretty much given back to people that qualify for the rebate, and the average rebate will be about $200. So again, there is no action required, but we wanted to put this on the agenda to get your consent, really, because this is a tariff that's gonna be implemented on the citizens of Harlingen that use natural gas, so we wanted you to be aware of what was happening.
Is it a statewide, is that how they do it statewide, is they?
Well, this one's being implemented.
Hit all the current users to pay for the rebates?
They're gonna have to. They're gonna have to answer that question, Commissioner, I'm not sure.
It's actually just gonna be for the RGV region that we serve. I'm Julie Hatfield with Texas Gas. You were close, Jennifer, Julie.
I'm fifty-four years old, I couldn't remember.
My sister's name is Jennifer, so. But it's gonna be each city in the RGV would have the program. So, that's how it would work, basically. Would it be statewide, 'cause we don't serve statewide?
But the amount collected has to equal the amount rebated?
Essentially, we would collect, like he said, the 28 cents per residential customer on average. It's based on usage. So, once that amount comes into the fund, then we would hope to, you know, we would hope to pay that out to, we have a low income part of the program, we have residential retrofit, we've got small and medium commercial business, and then new construction. So, it kind of, it would be open to any customer in that, in any of those four areas.
But the funds collected would have to go toward the rebate?
Yes. Absolutely.
And then, 28 cents, is this MCF or...
No, it's two cents per CCF of gas. And so, based on average usage in this area, that's how it came up, that number.
And does this money stay here and we don't take our rebate money and use it in another region?
Nope.
Stays in the valley?
It stays, yes. And we have some pretty specific reporting and energy efficiency savings analysis that we do each year. That would be brought in an annual report form that would be, of course, shared. The Lower Rio Grande Valley Development Council had all voted unanimously to approve the idea of this program, but now we're filing it, so.
That's where I heard about it, it was from there.
Yes. Yes. But we've had this program for many years in other areas and it's been a very well-received program and we have letters of support from Meals on Wheels and the Mayor of Austin, if you'd like to see those as well, but it might even all be in the filing. Any other questions?
Is there a staff recommendation?
We're recommending approval, Mayor.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the conservation adjustment clause tariff?
Sub moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. All right. Thank you all for being here tonight and...
Thank you very much.
For the service you all provide, our residents. Item 13, consider take action to approve the general election contract, Campbell County Elections Department, Harlingen, Solidity District, and City of Harlingen for leasing of voting equipment for May 7, 2016 general election.
Mayor, Commissioners, this is a standard contract from the county. And the last page on the contract is the breakdown of the cost that the city would pay. And the city's share would be $4,535. And the school's share would be $6,565 for a total of $11,000. $11,000? $11,100. And this is for the eight M100s to use on election day, one M100 to use on early voting, and then eight autonoms.
And the county is involved because they're runoff elections?
No, sir. The county is the one that leases the equipment to the city.
They've got the equipment.
They have the equipment. They own the equipment and they lease it to us.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the contract?
Sub moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item 14, executive session to discuss following items presented to Chapter 551, Subchapter B, DCA, Dex Government Code, Sections 551, 1087, 1551, 1071 regarding commercial financial information for business prospect and with which the city commission is conducting economic development negotiations and are discussing liberating financial or other incentives with the business prospect known as Project Thor and to possibly seek legal advice with the city attorney regarding this matter. Is there a motion to go into O and also B, 551.072, regarding purchase, exchange, lease or sale of real property? Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Sub moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are in executive session. The city commission is going to meet in a conference room with its attorney to discuss this matter. All right, we're out of executive session now at 6:22. And we're gonna go to item 15, which is consider and take action to approve the action of the development corporation of Harlingen in entering into an economic development and Chapter 38 agreement with this prospect known as Project Thor. Ask Ronald Garza to explain the project a little bit.
Good afternoon. Project Thor, what is Project Thor? Probably the newspaper did a good job of trying to lay people, to try to figure this one out. This is a company that has been in business in Brownsville for over 41 years. It's a building materials and supplier. They service the entire valley, but out of one store in Brownsville. And they want to expand their presence in the valley. They want to reach out to more people in the north. And the way to do it is to be in a location further west, and that's here in Harlingen. They are in the process of getting permitting or applying for permitting. So, they wanna be open in the summer of 2016. It's an existing building. Some of you may see this as the old Cameron Building off of H Street. They've actually owned it for about 12 years, they just never did anything with it, and finally, we got them excited about doing something with that property. The reason they get excited about it is because there's rail spur, they go for a rail line that goes right behind that building. Location, 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 you always hear about that. Well, this has a location for that type of business. It has a big building with high ceilings and lots of property around it to where they can store some of their lumber and other building materials. They plan on renovating that old empty warehouse. They also plan on adding a rail spur to the property to bring the lumber into the site. They'll invest at least $250,000 into the building, plus another $141,000, more or less, into the rail spur. And they're gonna hire up to 14 full-time employees over the next three years. The rail spur is basically an extension of the Rio Valley switching line that goes behind the building, on the north side of the building, and it'll come into the property. There's a lot of work that needs to be done to bring that rail spur in because of the current conditions of the land around the roadway. And what El Clavo wants is to ask us to help them pay for the rail spur. And they also wanna use a portion of the city property, which is along the south side of the building, right along this, the right-of-way that the city owns. That, we never built a street there, even though we have it as a dedicated street. So, they want a portion of that. This is a commercial project and an industrial building. It's essentially a real estate reuse in an area where industrial buildings are getting older and they're getting more dilapidated. The EDC Board and the city, I believe, both feel that there's a need to improve this area of town. And we like to work with companies that have been stable and are strong, as El Clavo lumber is, and they're willing to take the risk, because they're not asking for anything upfront. This is something where it's more of a rebate. So, they're gonna pay up all the costs, including the cost for the rail spur that they're asking for assistance on. What they want to do is get back a portion of the sales tax that's generated by their sales, so they can reimburse their cost of the infrastructure. And also, to be allowed to use a portion of that right-of-way, which is right along the property lines, like I said, on the south side. They're not gonna be able to build on it, they'll only be able to move a fence onto it, and so they can use additional storage there. So, what does that mean to us in numbers? Well, what it means is that, based on their projections, over the next three years, we would have generated with a 2% sales tax, $300,000 for the city. And it's divided in this chart into the different funds. So, the 1% general fund would be $150,000 over three years. The EDC, the 4A, $56,250, the 4B, $18,750, and then the other $75,000 is for property tax reduction. So, what are we giving up to pay for this approximately $141,000 rail spur? Nothing. Because we would not get the sales tax if El Clavo decides not to come. And also, nothing, because we are giving them only a portion of what they produce. Nothing coming from our budgets, it's only what they produce. So, take a look at the numbers again and then we'll tell you a little bit more about how we structured this deal. 50% of the 1% of the city's general fund would go back to El Clavo. 75% of the EDC, the 4A, would go back to El Clavo for a period of up to five years. If they generate the tax, the sales tax, then they can get reimbursed their $141,000. If the sales aren't there, they don't generate it, we're not liable. So, it's really totally up to them to generate enough sales to pay for the rail spur themselves. So, for example, over the same three-year period, they generate $117,000. And that means they still have two more years to come up with the balance. But while they generated that $117,000 for themselves, they also brought in $182,000 for us. That doesn't include the property tax, doesn't include what the payroll does, because there's people working there, and it doesn't include the value that they add by just fixing up that building and generating traffic in that area. So, over the last few years, we've lost Zarski and a couple of other building materials suppliers, because they've either consolidated, reduced jobs, moved around. But El Clavo has been growing for 41 years and they're growing here in Harlingen. So, what we are asking for, there's three different items on the agenda that are all related, is EDC staff, Board, and the city staff have recommended approval. Any questions?
All right. So, may I have any questions? The item before us right now is to approve the development corporation's agreement that they have entered into or approved with the company. So, we need a motion to approve that.
I'd make a motion to approve the action of the development corporation of Harlingen Inc. in entering into the economic development in Chapter 38 agreement with El Clavo Sales Company, Inc.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item 16, in related act, item, consider take action to approve the economic development Chapter 38 agreement between the City of Harlingen Development Corporation of Harlingen and a business prospect known as Project Thor, authorize the mayor to execute the agreement.
I'd make a motion to approve the economic development corporation and Chapter 38 agreement between the City of Harlingen, the Development Corporation of Harlingen, Inc., and El Clavo Sales Company, Inc., and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement.
Second.
Second. Second, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. And item 17, consider take action and conditionally grant a revocable license to encroach to this prospect known as Project Thor, authorize the mayor to execute the license to encroach.
I'd make a motion to conditionally grant a revocable license to encroach to El Clavo Sales Company, Inc., and authorize the mayor to execute the license to encroach agreement.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. All right. Congratulations to any of your board, Rodel, the project. It's a project that will, goes into an area of our community, the close door downtown that needs to see some revitalization. It re employs some people and it will generate the sales tax that we otherwise wouldn't have. So, it's really, and then they improve the property further by putting the rail spur in. It really makes it more valuable, these properties, so it's really a great project on several levels. Okay. Item 18, board appointments?
None. Yes, I'd like to reappoint Lupita Gutierrez Garza to the development corp, economic development.
None.
Is there a motion to, I have none. Is there a motion to approve the board?
Sub moved. The item U?
Um...
You would be making those, would you?
No, it's the commission jointly makes that, makes those appointments. Well, we, um... Let's bring that, let's bring that, we're not gonna have a meeting, we're not gonna have a tax agreement.
I'm trying to put something together.
That's the reason I bring it up.
Well, they continue to serve. They continue to serve until they've been reappointed, right?
Yes. My understanding is that we continue until we...
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that, I mean, that's, that's...
General, the way that we're...
Okay. Okay, so we have one, we have one board appointment, is there a motion to approve?
Sub moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Here. All right. Item 19 says, need questions?
Yes, sir. Yolanda Shoffit, violation of election law.
Yolanda Shoffit, 280, I guess, by mess. They say a picture tells a thousand words. Would you please, please pass the picture? And I want Mr. Sedna, the city manager, to see it very well, because he is the one that's supposed to enforce this when I go and file my complaint officially. Like I said, a picture tells a thousand words. This is, people, four people are running for, I think it's four people that are running for mayor, and one of them is Mayor Boswell, who is in violation of the law himself here, right here. And I have another one that I am going to file against. That's number one. Number two, the law applies to everybody equally and evenly, even the mayor of this town. So, we must not violate the law, because if you break the law, we pay the consequences, even the mayor, sir. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, Mayor, we have a Mr. Ken Lynn. I apologize if I mispronounced your name.
Trudeau. Ken Trudeau on Parks and Recreation Board. I spoke today and earlier and I've seen something there that I don't like. If I wanna call it to somebody's attention. If you're coming off of Lincoln and you turn right there on Dixieland Road, as you go down to where Luby's and Coles, there's a left turn arrow that you can turn in there. However, when you come back out, there is no such thing as a left turn arrow for you to go back on Dixieland Road. And the only way you can get back on there is go back where Logan's is and come back around that way. I found that out myself. So, like I said, it really creates a bottleneck there for some reason. Who would I talk to also about some street repair? Minor thing.
Is Javier, Javier is anxious to take your information. I can see it in his face.
We got a spot right there across from McKelvey Park there, as you're getting ready to go over to Colorado there, there's a sign there that says 35 mile speed limit. The pavement just dropped down like that. It's not level or nothing. And every car, it just says, no, you better not go 35 going across that, it's pretty rough. So, that needs to be fixed for sure. And I think they oughta do something about this traffic line. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Jaime Rodriguez.
Good afternoon. Jaime Rodriguez, 217 West Harding Avenue, Harlingen, Texas. I'm here to talk about the ongoing issue with AEP. I would, I assumed that they would report to my area of the alley to trim down some trees. They still haven't done it, so they know about it. There was a fire incident and they still haven't done nothing about it. And I did talk to Mr. Billby a couple days ago. And I get the impression that they're trying to tell me that it's a lost cause... And I get the impression that they're trying to tell me that it's a lost cause in my part, because I don't have the funds to pay for a high, a good fight against AEP. And I understand that and I'm pretty much, I'm aware of that. And that's why I came to the city. Being that I am a US Navy veteran, retired, I did 22 years in the service, and if a skipper was negligent of his other departments, he'd get fired. And this is a ship. I was in carriers, a couple of them, big carriers. We fought fires, we fought all kinds of fires, aircraft fires, and if we didn't do our job, we'd get fired, or we'd get demoted, or we'd get kicked out. So I'm present to you guys in all due respects. Excuse the name, guys, because I'm just talking guy terms. You gentlemen, to uphold your positions as commissioners and leaders of the city, because that's what I'm used to seeing, leaders, skippers, captains, admirals, that's what I'm used to serving. To take it back in history, back when I joined between '80 and '85, I confronted my superior LPO and he took me aside, said, let me talk to you here, Rod. And he took me to a little room and he shoved me against the wall so hard that I could, I could probably feel the next door on the other side. That was their way of teaching me how to be quiet. And thanks to my mother, which is here, taught me not to be quiet when I didn't have to be.
To the Minister of Defense.
To fight for my rights. And along with our friend here, I think she's doing a good job holding everybody accountable. I know we're not all perfect and it's not throwing stones, but the way I see it, we're little David and Goliath is AEP. So something should stand up to him. And I'm hoping the commissioner would do that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Then that concludes our meeting for this evening. Thank you all and we're adjourned.